...litigation or proceeding in the public interest. Two, request for an executive session pursuant to 25-oh's. Three hundred and seven, B, four, for the purpose of confidential communication with the city attorney regarding the pending worker so compensation claim of Jeff Oliver. It is the opinion of the city attorney that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute/defend any resulting litigation or proceeding in the public interest. B, miscellaneous items from the city manager C, miscellaneous items from the city council A, discussion about scheduling items for upcoming meetings two, consider establishment of a charter review committee. Questions and inquiries, appointments, the city council will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under appointments unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. None executive session. Confidential communication regarding a worker so compensation claim filed by Ray Dobson. B, confidential communication regarding a worker so compensation claim of Jeff Oliver. Return from executive session. Possible action regarding a worker so compensation claim filed by Ray Dobson. B, possible action regarding a worker so compensation claim of Jeff Oliver. Adjourn. Stillwater Municipal Building 723 S Lewis, Stillwater, Oklahoma, stillwater.org. Regular meeting agenda. November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, immediately following city council and Stillwater Utilities Authority meetings, council hearing room. Call meeting to order. Consent docket items listed on the consent docket are routine administrative matters that may be approved by a single vote with or without discussion. Trustees may remove individual items from the consent docket and place them on items removed from consent docket for additional consideration. The board of trustees will take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on these items either collectively as part of the consent docket or individually under items removed from consent docket. Two thousand and sixteen, schedule of meetings B, approval of minutes, executive session September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular meeting October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing, the city council will hear comments on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing from speakers who have submitted a written request in accordance with Secretary two dash twenty-five, Stillwater City Code. General information regarding communication with the city council in this manner is found on the reverse side of the agenda. Items removed from consent docket. General orders the trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under general orders unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. None. Adjourn. Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Municipal Building 723 South Lewis, Stillwater, Oklahoma, stillwater.org. Regular meeting agenda. Council hearing room. November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, immediately following city council meeting. Call meeting to order, consent docket items listed on the consent docket are routine administrative matters that may be approved by a single vote with or without discussion. Trustees may remove individual items from the consent docket and place them on items removed from consent docket for additional consideration. The board of trustees will take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on these items either collectively as part of the consent docket or individually under items removed from consent docket. Approval of minutes, regular meeting November second, two thousand and fifteen B, two thousand and sixteen, schedule of meetings C, bid recommendation for the transmission line steel structures for modifications to the sixty-nine thousand volt transmission system, SUA fifteen dash fifty-six D, extension of the northeast sewer lease agreement, SUA fifteen dash fifty-seven E, private exchange agreement with board of regents for Oklahoma and M colleges and Oklahoma State University. Authorize mayor to execute necessary instruments and deeds, SUA fifteen dash fifty-eight. Public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing, the trustees will hear comments on agenda items from speakers who have submitted a written request in accordance with Secretary two dash twenty-five, Stillwater City Code. General information regarding communication with the trustees in this manner is found on the reverse side of the agenda. Items removed from the consent docket, the trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under items removed from the consent docket unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. A with circle six nine pounds. General orders the trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under general orders unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. None reports from officers and boards announcements and remarks about matters of general interest may be made by the trustees, the general manager, or the general council at this time. Items of authority business that may require discussion or action, including a vote or series of votes, are listed below. Adjourn.
Whether you're shopping, dining, or doing business in Stillwater, we would like to take the opportunity to let you know about public parking in three areas around Stillwater: downtown Stillwater, campus corner, and the strip on Washington Street. In these areas, many of the free city parking spots, mostly in the street, are timed. Time ranges from thirty minutes to three hours Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM, and these spaces are not timed on weekends and city-recognized holidays. The purpose for these timed parking spots is to give everyone equal opportunity to a parking space, which is not only good for other people visiting these areas, but is a benefit to the businesses in these areas as well. Now, say for instance you're cited for overtime parking as you're inside of business. Well, instead of paying the ten dollar citation, you can easily bring it back to one of more than two hundred businesses in these three areas to have the ticket validated. All you have to do is give them the ticket and that's it. They'll take care of the rest. For more information about public parking spaces, the validation program, or tickets, call the municipal court at the city of Stillwater at four zero five seven four two eight two five five, or visit stillwater.org.
This is Kyle Gibbs with the Stillwater Police Department. When parking in a timed parking space around Stillwater, you may notice a chalk mark on your tire. Parking enforcement uses the chalk marks to monitor vehicles. A parking attendant will mark a vehicle and return later to see if the mark is still present. If your parking time is almost up, move your vehicle to another spot. The attendant will notice the mark changed and faded and will not write a citation. If your parking time is almost up, do not attempt to remove the mark. Removing the mark will result in a fine of five hundred and forty-nine dollars. This has been a public service announcement from the Stillwater Police Department and the city of Stillwater.
I'm going to call the Stillwater City Council November sixteenth meeting to order, and we have a special guest tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. His name is Logan Probst, and I would like for Logan to come forward, and he's going to lead us. Would everybody please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Logan, if you'll just stay right there. What school do you go to? And what grade are you in? Fifth grade, so this is your last year at Highland Park? Who's your teacher? Mrs. Kaywood, I know her. She's nice. Yeah, she's very nice. What's your favorite subject? Very good. What's your second favorite subject? Well, there you go. And what do you do when you're not in school?
I take gymnastics lessons on Tuesdays.
Wow, gymnastics lessons, okay, so what's your favorite stunt?
Front flips.
Front flips. Okay, all right. Do you have brothers and sisters?
I have two brothers. Both are older than me.
Okay, very good. And who brought you here tonight?
My mom, Miss Probst.
Hi, Miss Probst. Okay, councilors, do you have anything that you would like to ask Logan?
I just wanted to comment, Logan, I love your frames.
Thank you.
Very handsome.
Anybody else? Logan, thank you so much. Stay right there and we'll take a picture.
Are you done with your Halloween hat?
We have a proclamation. I'll just stand down here and read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Stillwater celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community, and whereas eighty-nine percent of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas eighty-seven percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and whereas ninety-three percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community, and whereas the city of Stillwater supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, as Small Business Saturday, and I urge residents of Stillwater to support our small businesses and merchants on this date and throughout the year. Shop local. Okay, that takes us to consent docket. Councilors, does anyone wish to remove an item? There's a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket passes with a vote of five to zero. And we don't have anybody for public comment, and so we are going to skip, and the public hearing has been pulled, so that's going to take us to general orders, which we have none.
Do you want to announce the strike item seven A from the agenda? You can do it here.
Just strike?
We're striking that item. It'll be subject to re-notification if the item goes forward.
Okay, so we are going to strike item seven A. Do we need to vote on that? Okay.
So did the applicant ask that this be pulled indefinitely? Are we planning on bringing it back?
We don't know of any day or anything. We just, it's just struck until further notice, so it will not come back until we've re-notified and it goes back through the full process.
And starts over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foreman. We're going to go to resolutions. Resolution number CC dash one five dash two oh. A resolution declaring the public necessity for acquiring ownership to real property and permanent and temporary easements on certain tracts of land here and after described located in sections twenty-five and thirty-six Township nineteen north, range one, east of the Indian Meridian, Payne County, state of Oklahoma, and sections thirty and thirty-one Township nineteen north, range two east of the Indian Meridian, Payne County, state of Oklahoma, for the purpose of constructing a water line adjacent to South Range Road between Nineteenth Avenue and Thirty-second Avenue. Mr. Dorman.
This is just a resolution of necessity which will authorize staff to start the process
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution CC-15-20. Please vote. And Resolution CC-15-20 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Item B, Resolution Number CC-15-21, a resolution authorizing signatories for depositories. Mr. Dorman.
This is a housekeeping matter with the addition of our new CFO and with the upcoming changes at the city manager level. It was necessary to carry a resolution so that checks could be drawn on city accounts in various banks, and this takes care of that issue.
Okay. We have a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number CC-15-21. Please vote. And Resolution CC-15-21 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item C, Resolution CC-15-22. A resolution concerning City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, Bridge Inspection Responsibility Pursuant to National Bridge Inspection Standards. Notification to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation of Bridge Inspection Consultant Selection for Bridge Inspection Contracts Commencing April 1st, 2016 through March 31st, 2018. Mr. Dorman.
This is simply notification to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation as to the city's choice for selection of a consultant to check, to test bridges under some regulations that we're required to comply with.
Counselors, motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution CC-15-22. Please vote. And CC-15-22 Resolution is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Item D, Resolution Number CC-15-23. A resolution canvassing the results of the special election conducted in the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, on the 10th day of November, 2015, for the approval of Ordinance Number 3325, granting a franchise to One Gas Inc., acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors and assigns for the sale, transportation, and distribution of natural gas, and accepting the results of such special election and declaring the measure as passed. Mr. Dorman.
Under the statutes for granting of franchises, you have to declare the results after an election determining whether the franchise is approved or not. The clerk has been notified that the measure passed, and this is simply your verification for purposes of the statute.
Okay. Counselors, motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution CC-15-23. Please vote. And that resolution passes with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to ordinances, and on second reading, Mr. Dorman, item A.
Ordinance Number 3331, an ordinance closing a utility easement at property addressed as 1712 South Hidden Oaks Drive.
Discussion, counselors? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
This will be to adopt?
Adopt. Adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt and a second. For Ordinance Number 3331, please vote. And Ordinance Number 3331 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item B, Mr. Dorman, on second reading.
Ordinance Number 3332, an ordinance closing 5th Avenue between Perkins Road and Dryden Street. That property addressed is 423 South Perkins Road, 519 South Perkins Road, 620 East 6th Avenue, and 624 East 6th Avenue.
Counselors, discussion?
This should adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Ordinance Number 3332, please vote. And Ordinance Number 3332 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Item A, Mr. Dorman.
We're withdrawing item A for request tonight. We would like to pursue item A2, though. Executive session pursuant to 25 OS, subsection 3074, for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending workers' compensation claim of Jeff Oliver. It is my opinion that public exposure of this matter will impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute or defend any resulting litigation or proceeding in the public interest. And that's all I have for executive sessions. I do need to make the council aware of something that crossed our desk mid-morning. We received an updated notification from the election board with regard to the deadlines for elections for the spring. As you'll recall, the legislature once again took a run at the election statute and has basically created a new process whereby the timing of elections is different in even and odd numbered years. Even years being presidential or gubernatorial races, and odd numbers usually being just local races. Anyways, what has happened is they have basically pushed all of the deadlines forward into December because of the presidential preference primary on March 1st. So as a result, we will have an election proclamation for you on the 7th, and we are suggesting that instead of having the primary in its normal March time, that you actually have the primary on February 9th, which is the same date of the school board elections. Otherwise, the candidates, if anyone is in a primary race, they will be on the same ballot as all of the presidential candidates and everybody else that's involved in that race.
I like it.
I like it. Good turnout. Let's keep it.
Well, you can get lost, though. I think it would create more problems than it would solve, but...
Well, my reasons are different from counselor.
I can't comment on that. Let's say. But anyways, I will bring you back in the schedule. The reason, the other reason I wanted to bring it up tonight is that if someone is considering running for the city council, they need to be aware that the filing date will most likely be the second week of December, 13th through the 15th. The election board advised us that both Cushing and Yale have set their filing dates for that particular week, and we see no reason to not use the same week. That way, there are filing candidates for all three of the municipal races. I think Perkins may also be using that same schedule, but I haven't received verification of that yet.
So would that change conceivably the date they would be seated?
If it is possible, yes. That's always the big question. If nobody ran, if your successor, for example, ran unopposed, then yes, if they declare that person to be the winner, then you would, as you would say, be out of here.
That's what I was curious.
So like in December, if no one filed, you could step down?
Well, the election would determine that.
The election otherwise determines when your term ends. Because under the charter, it's the Monday following the date of certification of the election results. And the charter basically says that if no one is opposed, if they run unopposed, then you're not placed on a ballot, so the election board actually certifies on the Monday following the filing date. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we don't need to vote on this. You're just informing.
Nothing. Tonight I will have everything ready on the 7th. But I would ask if you would like for us to maybe go ahead and start publicizing that when the filing dates are going to be, I think that it's important to get that out there since we're about six weeks ahead of when we normally have candidates filed.
Yes, I think that we absolutely need to publicize this, and we want as much public participation as we can get, so...
Very good. We'll have it ready.
So, sorry, would the general election be in March or April?
It will be in April. We'll just skip March. The idea is to skip March completely. And there's already going to be a ballot, or at least there's a reserved time for the school board election, so we won't have voters going to two different election times. We're trying to stay on the regular election schedule. That's part of the purpose of the new law, is to condense the number of times that the voters need to go to the polls.
Well, it's a great idea. It'll actually save money.
It is, yeah.
Action, so, yeah.
And better voter turnout, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Foreman? Okay. Item B is Mr. Galloway, and before he says anything, I would like to thank Dan for his 10 years of service as city manager. We all appreciate you, and we know that this is your last council meeting. And so I know I speak for the entire council when I say we wish you good luck and a happy retirement.
Thank you very much. And since it is my last meeting, I'm going to take a couple of minutes and make a few comments. A lot of people I would like to thank, and I'll never be able to cover all that list. It's been a real opportunity to serve the people of Stillwater for 10 years. 10 years sounds like a short time, but I was thinking today, this meeting tonight is probably, it's somewhere between my 380th and 400th city council meeting. And I've come to work in this building over 2,400 days, you know? So a lot of things happen in 10 years. Those two numbers aren't really important, but the things that I have seen happen during those 10 years are important. In 10 short years, I've worked with five mayors. Bud Lacy, Roger McMillan, Nathan Bates, John Bartley, Gina Noble. And I've worked with over 14 city councilors, and I won't attempt to name them all. I'd miss someone. But nearly 20 people have served as elected officials have come and gone while I've been here, and they each bring a unique perspective to the council. And as we add new perspectives, it's always a challenge for the councilors to meld those into a common goal and take direction. They manage to do that. And I think we've made a lot of successful things happen in Stillwater the last 10 years. And just to let you know, some of the things that stand out in my mind as highlights of the 10 years, for what it's worth. When I came, Mr. Weaver, the university still had Hall of Fame all torn up, and nobody knew whether it was ever going to open again or not. And we spent a lot of time working with the university, and we developed some relationships. And of course, Hall of Fame was reopened to a much nicer street than we ever knew before. And in conjunction with, of course, the stadium and the athletic village, it's really wound up to be something we, as a community, can be as proud of as the university is proud of. But there was only a beginning. I mean, we've cooperated on so many things. The joint funding and rebuilding of University Avenue to a much nicer condition. We're currently jointly working with the university on Hall of Fame and Western Intersections and that improvement, and the list goes on and on. And I really feel that during this last 10 years, with the support of council, with the administration at OSU, and I've heard a lot of people say it, I think we've all experienced a closer working relationship between Town and Gown, City of Stillwater, and OSU, then we hope it's better than ever before. That's always been the goal of this council, and I believe of OSU. And we've all finally learned, as Burns Harkas often says, what's good for the city is good for the university, and what's good for the university is good for the city. And we embrace that. And that's been really an honor to serve as a part of that relationship building. And it's gone beyond that, I think, the city. I think, from my experience, we've developed some really great working relationships with all the entities in Stillwater. You know, the Chamber of Commerce, Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology Center, Payne County. And it goes on and on. And we formalized part of that with CDAC, which is the bringing of all those entities together to share and discuss what we're all doing individually for the economic growth of our community, and we're able to share and collaborate. And hopefully, that collaboration is making the entire effort to grow Stillwater even better than it's been before. Those have been exciting times. And I remember longer ago than 10 years, and I go back into the early 90s, and my kids were coming to Stillwater, and I remember visiting downtown Stillwater. Downtown Stillwater didn't look exactly like it looks today. And there were a lot of vacant stores. And again, with support of council and the support of landowners and businesses in the downtown, we created the first business improvement district downtown and got a vested interest of the property owners and businesses in our downtown and the whole community. The city made commitments to match the businesses' commitment. And we've seen millions and millions of dollars invested in Stillwater's downtown, and today you have trouble finding a place to park. That's good news. Seven days a week, seven nights a week, you have to hunt for a place to park. That's an accomplishment of this city that I will always remember and be glad to have been a part of. And as I said, I could go on and on, but there are so many people to thank. And I just would like to tell the people of Stillwater, I hope you realize how fortunate of a city you are to have nearly 600 city employees who are some of the most quality public servants I've ever had the pleasure to work with. You may not know it. I work with them and see them work every day. I've been in the business for 33 years, and you should really be proud of the group of employees you have in this community. They work quietly behind the scenes, and they get it done. You see the products. You may not see them. But when you see a city employee, say thank you. And I will just end by saying, thank you, Stillwater, for 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. And that moves us to miscellaneous items from city council.
I have something about. The city will pick up curbside glass recycling on your regular collection days the week of November 16th through the 20th and December 14th through the 18th. Beginning in January 2016, your glass collection day will be the first waste service day of each month.
So on that day, we will not put out yard waste. It would just be the glass. Very good. Anything else?
Stillwater Police Department is raffling off a Stillwater Strong painting for a $5 ticket. Officer Trevor Meredith was selected to create the four-foot-by-four-foot painting, which is on a heart-shaped frame that was designed and crafted by local carpenter Steve Axdel. The raffle drawing will be held Friday, December 18th. The winning number will be posted to the city's website and on the Stillwater Police Department Facebook page. And proceeds of the raffle will go to the Stillwater Medical Center Foundation. Are there pictures of the painting on the...
I think it's on the website.
It's on the website?
No, it's not on Stillwater.org.
Okay. So you can look at it before you buy your ticket.
Thank you. Counselor Naher?
Yes. Mark your calendars for Wednesday, the 18th, which is this Wednesday, at 4:00 p.m. We will be at the Main Street and 10th Avenue intersection to officially open the mini roundabout and to dedicate the Bronco Buster statue. If you haven't been downtown lately, you should stop by. It's a beautiful addition to downtown Stillwater. We'd also like to thank everyone who voted last Tuesday. The funds generated from the continuation of this sales tax will help fund transportation projects for the next 10 years.
Anything else? Okay. I think I will just say that, once again, you know, another sad weekend. Our hearts are broken once again, and we're thinking about everybody in Paris. And just keep everybody in your thoughts and prayers. All right, item two.
I would like to ask the council to consider the establishment of a charter review committee. And I think I'd like to make a motion that we establish this committee. Is that correct?
You could do that because it's on the agenda. So that was the idea.
Right. The last time the charter was reviewed was 2007?
2006, 2007, and we'd culminated in six amendments to the charter, so...
So this would not be, you know, a huge job, but there are some housekeeping things that need to be done and some things that we need to look at. Mr. Dorman has pulled the list of names that were on the committee before. And I would ask each of you to submit a name of a person or persons whom you think would be appropriate for this review. It shouldn't be a very long commitment.
I think we took about 45 days to work through the whole thing. Dan, wasn't it three meetings?
It was about that. You know, we had a group of citizens on the committee, and I think we met three times. First, we just discussed and go through it, and then they reviewed it, came back. I'm sure it's a three or four meetings, but a month and a half, you should be able to have it.
Is the committee made up of a combination of people? I mean, regular citizens? Is the committee made up of a combination of people? I mean, regular citizens that wouldn't normally know a city charter and not...
Yeah, we had, we had quite a cross-section last time, so...
How many are on the committee?
I think we had, we may have had as many as seven on the last committee. I didn't get to pull the, I pulled the file, but I didn't get to pull the list, so, but I believe that number was seven, because we had a couple that, you know, you'd have one or two guessed, but it was a pretty workable number, I think.
And will the counselors submit the names to you, or to me?
Actually, submit them, once you submit them to me, and then I will put it back on the agenda for the seventh, where you'd actually vote on who the conferees will be, and then move forward from there. We could actually try to have a meeting in December if we can get everybody appointed.
Yeah. Okay. So, so the motion would be to form the committee, the charter review committee?
One more question. If someone is in the audience or listening tonight or tomorrow, and they want to serve on this committee, do they just contact?
Contact the counselor.
Contact the council, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion to review the...
To establish a charter review committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish a charter review committee. Please vote. And that passes with a vote of five to zero. That moves us, I'm going to recess this meeting and go to our SUA and CETA meetings, and then we'll come back to city council meeting for the executive session. At this time, I call the Stillwater Utilities Authority November sixteenth meeting to order. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item, or is there a motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero.
Takes you all the way.
Reports from officers and boards. Does anyone have anything? Mr. Dorman, Mr. Galloway?
Nothing more.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting at five fifty-nine. Please vote. And it is adjourned at five fifty-nine. That moves us to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order for November sixteenth. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket for Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. Please vote. And Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is adjourned at six o'clock with a vote of five to zero. I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting right now. Is there a motion and a second to move into executive session?
Motion to move into executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. And this is new. Three votes yes, so, okay, and one, Weaver abstains, and Nahara says no. So Nahara, you're overruled. Go to the meeting. And Joe, Counselor Weaver?
What?
Did you have a reason to abstain?
Well, as I said...
Yes, yes, so...
I know the applicant's family.
Right, so you will not be voting on this.
I need to recuse from the meeting. I don't think it's appropriate for me to hear the discussion.
I agree. So, thank you. So Counselor Weaver is recusing himself from exec, executive session, and he gets to leave right now, and we will move into executive session right now.